I'd like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 8th. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, present.
Present.
Present. All right, if you would stand for the pledge.
My pledge would be that the United States of America and its every power which stands one nation under God indivisible, infinite and eternal.
All right, item three on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I will motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I just turned on my microphone. All right, with our agenda adopted, we can move on. Item four is our discussion items. And we have Ms. Pam Bowers here to discuss our Drake Planetarium. So at this time, Ms. Bowers, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone this evening. Test, test, test. It's great.
It's green.
Okay, green and great. I'm here to talk about Drake Planetarium and Science Center. Am I in control of?
No, I'll be yours.
You're gonna do it? Okay. Tri-State first started this journey with Norwood City Schools in 1984. And at that time, a foundation was, okay, great. A foundation was formed in order to keep the planetarium open for Norwood City Schools. That was one of the main, main functions. So I don't know how many of you been in the planetarium lately. But on the top screen, you're looking at a group of high school kids. This guy looks like he's gonna get a, on, on the end, get a stiff neck right there. But the planetarium, as you know, is utilized by all of the kids in our school district. That would be pre-K all the way up through grade 12. It also includes the Montessori school. And we provide all sorts of programming, specifically field trips to the planetarium for all of those kids at least once. Typically, they would come in more than once because we have a whole, a lot of different types of programs. We are aligned with the state standards of science and STEM. And it, it goes through all of the sciences, but we've added architecture, engineering, mathematics, and several different types of technology programs. So in this picture, what we tried to do is put together something that happened from each of those years. And it, we laughed when we first saw this picture on the bottom. We all had our masks on. This is in 2020, and we were open. And we were open every chance we could get. The health department helped us get the rooms ready, and he went room to room, whatever room we were in, and he set it up with the distance and everything. So we were full that summer of 21, 20, whatever that COVID year. There were actually two years, I think, we were affected. And, but we could only have nine students. That's it for each camp. So the curriculum was, we, we did camp curriculum, STEM camp. And then these are some of the activities we did while the kids were there. We take, like, like this activity at the top, we take things like that to all of the elementaries. Or they can come to the planetarium and they can have a double field trip. They have one hour of planetarium and then one hour of a STEM lab, right down the hall from the planetarium in the flex room. So basically, what I do is I see what their schedule is, and then we schedule around that. So the teachers can, they're not disrupted, or it doesn't cause any havoc by us being there. We also use that flex room when outsiders come in. The, the main reason I think that we're here today is that we want to make sure that everyone is aware of what we are doing and the benefits of Norwood City School partnering with Tri-State Foundation. Obviously, it's the field trips and the hands-on curriculum of STEM. We have, like I said, Earth and Space Science curriculum, pre-K through grade 12. And what I have recently done is what's gonna go on the link the teachers would get next year. It would be a direct link to scheduling. Scheduling, teachers, as you know, are very busy. And scheduling, we were gonna try to give them four times a year to schedule. And then they would pick whatever section of time where they would be covering Earth and Space Science in their curriculum, and they would sign up directly right there. The, the district, as you know already, they have their own form, and that, that form would be on that link, and then they could fill it, fill it out. After that, it's set up so that it goes to the principal. And so they could do that as, as well, just send it hopefully digitally to the principal, which would be awesome. Our outreach programs can be scheduled in any of the schools. And there's a whole listing of the different outreach programs that we have, and that, that will be in the page that has all of our curriculum. Another thing that, that we are really wanting to do more of is the outreach program that deals with the elementary school. And for example, we have a STEM festival exhibit that travels. And the, the, the teachers could order it, actually, the PTA could order it, anybody who's in that building. And what we do is we set up a, a STEM station lab that covers 10 different centers. We can probably accommodate, I'd say, what, 40 to 50 people at a time. And the families could come and do the STEM lab with their children, which is good. And we get to see their, their families, and they see some of the things that the schools are offering. The other thing is, it's pretty cool, is we, we could take those big Lego exhibits to the elementaries. And that, the exhibit I'm talking about, we have a gazillion Legos. And so we would take literally thousands of Legos to the elementary schools individually, set up what we call a Lego City, a planet overview, and then they pick the planets they want to do. The, the big one this year will be From the Moon to Mars. And I'm writing grants right now to get sponsorship for that. But we would take that into the elementaries and cover everything from composition to the types of structures that are gonna be on the moon. We're gonna focus on the moon first, and then we can, if they want Mars, that's fine, too. I have these big plaster boards that we made. Actually, Duke Energy sponsored this, and they lay on the top of the tables, and I have, they're six foot, about this size. And we put them all together, and we have a whole topography of the moon, and then another for Mars. And when you talk to classrooms about where exactly are we going on the moon? And that is the kind of stuff that we talk about, the new discovery stuff that has been made on, about the moon and Mars, and/or any of the planets. If I had the money, which we could get a sponsor, we could make a couple of other panels. Because to imagine walking into a classroom, and it's all covered in moon plates or Mars plates. It, it, it brings us to life, to the kids. And then we also include physical geography with that, okay? So they're doing topo maps. Who remembers in here doing a topo map? You might. And had, did you do the boxes? Where the, they had to guess with the sticks that we put down it?
I think so, yeah.
There's nothing like it. They're making their own topo maps. They're discovering the, the differences that are on the surface of the, the planet or the moon. Now we're doing dwarf planets. But anyway, it's, it's pretty cool. So that's what we can do inside of, oh, I don't want to forget this. We received our certification to get the NICE exhibit. So that's the National Interactive STEM Exhibits, and they're, they're portable museum exhibits. And let's say, I think probably by next year, we would have five. And so teachers can sign up for that, and in we go with these individual exhibits, just like a mini museum. And they don't have to leave their classroom. I'm sure they probably want to. But it's pretty, pretty cool. This next page talks about the opportunities that Norwood City Schools have due to our grant partnerships. And this first line here, I don't know, it's gonna not show up on that thing. Okay, our first line talks about just some of them. You know this, you see United Way in there, NASA after-school, NASA Keep It Cool, that, that went into Andrea Alsip's rooms. And we had them do a NASA program, and they had to design an insulator, like they could use on, on a rocket ship. And, but they had to do the inquiry to figure out with all these materials which one worked. So that's, that's pretty good inquiry doing, doing that. It initially was painful because they hadn't done that kind of inquiry where we didn't give them any of the, the answers. They had to figure it out, and then they had to make a video. And then from there, it went to NASA, and they featured it on the website. So that, I, I like to do stuff like that, things that aren't just ordinary stuff. Our partners are both local and national, and you can, you can see who, who they are. This is just some of them. When the partners come in from other places, they bring their resources. They bring other people with them. And that's also very good because we get resources we wouldn't have. And on the bottom in the green, this is what the value, the overall value is of the programming for that five years between 2020 and 2025. Now you're gonna see a different number on the next page. And Norwood City Schools are, the program with you and the model that we use is entirely different than anybody else in the city. Our other partners, we see them once, we see them twice, we might see them the next year. But it's not, it's not like Norwood because we could see Norwood kids probably five days a week with different programming, which is just not available to, to the outside. We see kids from Ohio, Indiana, and Kentucky. And, and then Norwood City Schools, we, they have ongoing access. My concern is that they know about it and they use it. So our value the last five years, this is the Norwood City Schools values, is 272,000 in services and grants. That other number that you saw, that 500,000, that included equipment that we had to buy, laptops. What else? Licenses.
Licenses.
Robotics. All of that was paid for by the grants. Other Tri-State customers came in in that five years at about 84,000. And it's, it's a little lower than normal because of the COVID years. And so, you know, I typically, I would say it would be about 110 from the outside. But that segment of years made it a little bit lower for the outside. But in any case, Norwood City Schools' value that they received was 272,000. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I'd like to know the, kind of, what does that entail? And you, you mentioned earlier, and I apologize for my tardiness, I was stuck on 75. But I did turn on the meeting, and I was listening to everything previous, so I, I could stay up to date on this. My question for services, you had mentioned that, you know, a classroom teacher might come once a year, especially for elementary teachers, and that you wanted to email them to sign up. I think part of the disconnect might be that emails just aren't seen at the, at the rate we would like them to be. And that could be just because they're getting so many. They're inundated with emails. I know I am. I want to see if there's a way that we could improve that communication to our teachers. Because if they're only using it once a year, but maybe they've got three or four units that would directly apply to services you offer, I, I want them to be able to use that better.
And I think when you deal with a link instead of an email, it's better. Because they have time to look at the information. But I also think that if I'm in the buildings, I'm gonna have to go into the buildings and have a meeting. And it's see if we can expedite the sign up. And then teachers will have an opportunity then, if I, if I have four, four times in the building, then they'll be able to tell me where they are. You know, I have no way of knowing where they are in their curriculum.
Right.
And that's always an issue. So if we can get them signed up early, then they get what is matching their curriculum. So hopefully that helps, as you're all aware, where they have to walk. And sometimes that works with the weather, and sometimes that doesn't, but they get two reschedules. And that should, that should do it. So Norwood's advantage, they receive 224% more value than other schools and communities we serve. Key takeaway is that there's just no other partner that we have that gets this level of service, this level of support and coordination, and the resources. Who, just please use them. It bothers me if I have a student, you know, when I look at kids, I, I don't know if they're originally from Norwood, or they're from the outside and are now in Norwood Schools. I've never been in here before. That bothers me. And they, and I've had kids come up in the hallway and say, when do we get to go in there? It's important that we level that out so that students, all of them, will be able to come multiple times. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, sorry, pardon my ignorance, but the, so the $84,000 from other Tri-State customers. So if, if somebody that was not Norwood City Schools came to see you, they pay like, like a fee?
They pay.
They pay. And like Ball Park, what is your typical field trip cost?
I'm gonna turn that over to Abby. If you can give me, a lot of people don't want to come for just an hour. They want to come for two hours. That's good. Then we're gonna make some money on that field trip.
So that question is kind of heavy-weighted depending on who it is, right? So if there is certain school that qualifies for something underneath one of our grants, that's obviously gonna be discounted for them, and that's in that 84 that you're looking at. That's, that's part of that. But if, let's just say, basic, run-of-the-mill, they don't qualify for, you know, any access support, one hour, I think it's 10, 10 bucks for one hour for a student. Two hours, depending on what they do, it could be 15 or it could be 18. But that would be at the top.
So you charge per student?
Yeah.
Per hour, per, okay.
Per, yeah, per hour, per, depending on what they want. So like a basic planetarium show would obviously cost less than if they came in for one of like our big NASA projects.
So that's basically saying then you're bringing in like 16,000 a year? Is that, like, from outside? Is that for five years?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so does that, so about 16,000 a year is what you're getting from outside?
No, this, so this is value delivered. This is what they get from us. This is not what they're paying out.
Okay, okay.
Like grant provided.
This is our
Okay.
equivalency.
Contribution
Right.
through grants for other
Okay. Okay. That makes sense.
Does that help?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I, yeah.
Do you have a printed-out version of this, or can you email me this so I can have it?
We can do it right now.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, I think another way to look at it is there was $350,000 value of services available for students, and 270,000 of that went to Norwood.
Got it. Thank you.
About how many hours was that in field trips?
Please.
About how many hours of that was in field trips to Norwood?
So we're gonna take 272,000, we're gonna divide it by?
I could get you our student, but I'm not sure if it's per hour. I'd have to work that out.
But this is all of the program, and so this is like additional, like Lego programs. You visit their school, not necessarily a direct field trip to the planetarium. So it's everything.
It's collective, it's everything.
Okay.
All right, what's new? Hopefully something that you think is worthwhile, as well as what the teachers think is worthwhile. And the kids, you know, it's really important that they learn a lot and have fun. Next year, now I've had this program before. And I don't know how many years ago it was, but the planetarium, we would like to do our intern program again with the students at the middle school and the high school. And ideally, we, they'd be trained initially as middle school, and they'd stay with us all the way through high school. And they would be in the planetarium during the regular school day if they had any sections of time. Or like, for example, if they're in a physics class, or if there's an elective for an astronomy class next year, we could probably recruit from those areas, and maybe any of the general science and physical science classes. We would have them in the planetarium, learning all about a preliminary beginning of astronomy, which either is supported by the astronomy class or from the physics class, because there's a section in there. And if I get kids that don't have any astronomy background, we will teach them. And that's, that's part of their goal. And the planetarium interns, you know, we'll train them. And we need kids from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Not all day, but we need a bunch of interns. The students, they'll receive community service hours needed for graduation. So if the new astronomy, astronomy elective occurs, you know, I think Mr. Farish is, he's said, yes, I want to do this. And, and Drake Planetarium would work with him and the physics class and the astronomy classes to do some wild astronomy. I have done this before, and I, I still have connections with the robotic telescopes. And they're in Chile. And it would be great if our kids could actually do real astronomy, learning how to image processing. I forgot the images that are still in my office. What we did, we had 150 kids at that time, all on that robotic Harvard Smithsonian telescope. I had, one of the astronomers asked me, how many more kids do you have? They said, I only have one space at a time. You're killing us. And so they went ahead, they got all their images, they learned how to do it, and then guess what we did? We went to the art department, had the kids do interpretive art. And that would be great, great if we did this. We had a gallery exhibit that went place to place. And we won. We won the national contest. I think we overwhelmed them with, it's just they went, huh, who is this?
When was that?
I'd have to look it up.
I mean, was it recent? Have we done anything like that recently?
Don't have to, think, think about what we do, we would have to actually allocate. This is, this is very different than what we've been doing.
Because these all sound wonderful. It's just not something that we either are currently involved in. I'd like to see us back involved in those things because they're really cool programs, and partnering with our teachers in new ways to support STEAM. That's wonderful. I want to do that. But if these programs we're talking about are over a decade old, or even over pre-COVID.
These are all alive and well.
Depending, you know, if some of these happened back when I was young, but they were cool, we should do them. If they were pre-COVID, but we stopped doing them for X, Y, or Z reason.
Right.
If it's there, and it's awesome, we should do it. I remember having volunteers in the shop when I was in high school. I like the idea of bringing back docents and the high schoolers to gain hours there, including the students. So the fact that we haven't been doing that is part of why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, they, that was just, the school didn't want to do it at that time. And so that's, you know, they're in control, so that's what we do. But hopefully, we can do this again because I know that the kids really like it. I'm looking at what else is new in these pictures. There, the bottom right-hand corner is a giant Lego build. It's a city build. On the top is our new little endeavor. It takes place after school, and this is Young Entrepreneurs. And we just got the word, we, we made the first cut in the competition, and so they're sending us money for a party. We are waiting to get some winners. We have a lot of really good kids. And we have, what, 14, 14 kids? They stayed with us all year. And so we hope that some of those kids, if not all, win, win a section. We have third graders all the way up through eighth graders. I have videos of all of them because we had to submit them, but it's, they're really good, really good. Let's see. Science on a Sphere coming to you at Norwood High School. We are going to have an exhibit where the kids can utilize this Science on a Sphere software. Not only can they do an exhibit right there in front of the planetarium, but I'm gonna take software to them in the classrooms. And anybody who's, you know, interested, then we will give them then we will give them their free copy, we'll teach them how to use it, teach the kids how to use it. And this stuff's fabulous. Have any of you ever seen this exhibit? It's like a s- six foot free hanging sphere. I don't know that we need that, but, but um, it covers astronomy, it covers climate change, it covers all kinds of environmental processes. And we, we have a big screen like this that we could roll into the classroom and for training. And then I think a lot of the teachers have a big screen in their classrooms. So we could get this up and running by, let's say, November, November of next year. Okay? And this is the last photo and it's just Norwood kids doing random things. Uh, at the top, that's kids in summer camp, top right. And they're trying to figure out where the sun is in the sky. We're big on directions. Where is the sun? Where is the moon? That's one of the biggest misconceptions we have that no one, because of GPS, no one knows a- a- anything about where other things are. But come to Drake Planetarium and we'll show you how to navigate your way right through the solar system. The bottom one is, if I get a big classroom, when I, when I had that, then I was teaching fifty, forty or fifty kids at a time. So, right now the flex room is working and that's what we'll be using. Is there any other questions that I can answer? Thank you very much and uh we hope to see you at Drake Planetarium.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
I enjoyed the, the clip stuff.
Well, you were right in the middle of it. I think we actually put you to work. We had so many kids. Yeah.
Item five on the agenda is the Personnel Section Superintendent Recommendations. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Mrs. Brennan.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Under five point oh one, we've got some retirements, resignations, and non-renewals. So we have a lot tonight. Uh, we have um several individuals who are retiring. Julie Rue being one of them, although um she has indicated that possibly she'd like to return part-time for next school year. On a halftime basis, she's an intervention specialist, so she's desperately needed. Because I think Christine and Amanda said they were at XU today at the Career Fair and there wasn't an intervention specialist to be found. So we're gonna work our way through that with her. Then we have a number of resignations and as you can see on there, oh my goodness, there is, you know, an intervention specialist leaving us for various reasons. So then in our next section, the non-renewals, this is the annual non-renewal of our aides per the collective bargaining agreement. It happens yearly in April. Um, most of these individuals will be brought back next month in May. Then under employment, we have a couple of um items. In the first section, uh, teachers in their first three years are on limited contracts and they must be approved each year. So we break them out, years one, two, and three, and you have to approve their uh reemployment. So that is what that is about. And we um, we would like to welcome a new student aide, even though it's April. We did have a resignation and we found someone to replace her, so um, welcome to Sarah Stanford. And then under changes uh status, we do have uh Mr. Western Dorf moving from the middle school principal to the Assistant Superintendent position starting next school year. And under item number three, pupil activity contracts, we just don't have any tonight, which is unusual, but uh, so that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brennan. Who knows, we might have some by next week.
Exactly. Some coach will leave and we'll have to replace them.
All right, uh continuing on, item six, this is the Education Committee and I will turn it over to Mrs. Rarican.
Thank you, Madam President. I love how it's set up for me this time. It's just the school and then all their filters. I just love it. Please do this again. Norwood View going to Enomotix, which is the old um Siemens. And I drive by it every time, I have to go to shake. And Drake Planetarium. Dun dun duh. Fenwick Park, Merrill Lynch, which I think is hilarious, second and third graders going to Merrill Lynch. I'm like, are they going to learn finances?
I hope so.
Uh, it's not funny, but it is giving me joy, okay? It's giving me joy. Um, right, it's just adorable, wonderful. Um, Hunter Park and Surrey Square. Sharpsburg is going to Cincinnati Zoo, Shea Stadium, Green Acres, my favorite, Xavier University and Cincinnati Nature Center, also a favorite. Uh, the Montessori School also going to Cincinnati Nature Center. And Nord Ha- High School going to the Great American um Ballpark, which actually my kiddo did that.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Rarican.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Sorry. All right, continuing on with our agenda tonight, uh, item seven, this is the Policy Committee and I will turn it over to Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually gonna turn it over to Mrs. Jessup.
Mr. Farish, a few policies for this evening.
A few? I had to scroll.
Yeah, it's quite a few.
That's how you know.
Many of the policies are changed because of House Bill Eight that we will outline this evening. So we're gonna start um with an easy one. Um, school year, school calendar, ICICA. The change in this policy is just that um we are asked to have a public hearing on the school calendar that may be separate, but it does not have to be, it can be a part of any other regular board meeting that we hold. So that would, which we do already, so this is just um in, it will be in our policy now. Computer online services, IDE. This policy is updated. So at first we had Senate Bill Twenty-nine legislation and then House Bill um four thirty-two came along and made some fixes in Senate Bill Twenty-nine. So some of the language, um, these new requirements, the updates reflect the new requirements for monitoring school issued student devices and the use of student data. They have made some changes to the requirement of a seventy-two hour notice requirement, um, which will be helpful for school districts and they've also allowed us to, to continue sharing data with our ITC and appropriate vendors that we work with. So these are all um changes to this existing policy that will, that are more supportive of our day-to-day operations. Parental, Promoting Parental Involvement, IGBLA. This is in direct relation to House Bill Eight. So this is a detailed policy that has to be adopted by July one, so we're perfectly aligned to do such a thing. Um, this policy is interesting in that it, it is a lot of definitions about promoting parental involvement and what that would mean for districts in regards to many different programs or services we offer and how we share that information to families. So this is among the many policies affected um from House Bill Eight and about parent involvement. J um, Policy for Release Time for Religious Instruction, which is J E F B. This is a new policy. This is a required policy and it is not considered an endorsement by a Board of Education because of, it is simply required. Um, it is a policy um because of House Bill Eight. It asks that um school districts allow for release time for religious instruction. It does have some tighter parameters about this work. Um, and that it allows students not to, it states when students are not allowed to be absent from different core subjects in the course of a school day. It also requires, um, allows for the board to require the sponsored, sponsoring entity to on an annual basis provide FBI and BCI checks, which we knew was really important to this board. Um, and that um they have to, to be a part of, anyone a part of any sponsoring entity would have to be a part of so-called checks. So this again is a new policy for our district, for all districts. The next policy, Student Expulsions, JGE, is a policy that um allows the board to authorize the superintendent to have an additional reason for an expulsion. It also allows the board to authorize the superintendent to it extend an expulsion based on any parameters that um are set forth under this policy and allows that consideration to be made. This is a reflection of um House Bill Two-oh-six. The next two policies are about administering um medication. So the first policy, Administering Medicine to Students, Version One, which is JHCD, and administering prescription drugs to students, which is JHCD, um, regu, it's the regulation and it's the first version. These two policies um are important to our work because they, they are in reaction to House Bill Seventy. Um, it is something that I've spoken to the nurse about and um she is already perfectly aligned with this policy. It allows for prescription drugs to be administered pursuant to the instruction of the prescriber and allowed to be administered during the course of the school day to students. It also um allows for obviously appropriate emergency care that we already have been a part of. It allows for um, as a part of the regulation, it allows for the change in the terminology of the definition of drugs. So it has two classes of drugs now, both prescription and over-the-counter medicine. And we have procedures for both of those kinds of drugs, prescription and over-the-counter medication. The next policy, the next two policies are about school boards. The first policy is School Board Meetings BD and the next one is School Board Committees BCE. So these policies for the school board meeting, um, it's a newly enacted provision that states that school boards no longer able to hold meetings virtually. As you know, as you, we've been a part of, we were allowed to have um board meetings virtually. They are saying that from, from um the month of April that we would no longer be allowed to hold a school board meeting virtually. When you look at the board committee meetings, which is BCE, that allows for a board member to attend via video conference or other electronic technology. It asks for the school district to provide appropriate kind of internet services to allow for that to occur. Um, and then as we already knew, as this board was already keenly aware of, that board member doesn't vote because we simply don't vote during committee meetings anyway. But um, they aren't as a virtual member um oh given, allowed for a reimbursement um because of that committee meeting. Those two policies directly affect our work at committee and board meetings. The next policy is Staff Student Relations and we have two policies that are actually identical. It's GBH and JM. And they're re, they're revised um based on House Bill Eight, the parental involvement provisions. These, this is a quick change on both of these where instead of reporting to the Ohio Department of Education, which is no longer, we would report to the State Board of Education. So quick um, small change in those um two policies that are identical. The next policy is the Family Life Education or Sex Education Policy, IGAH, IGAI. Um, this is about House Bill Eight as well. Um, and it has a reference to comply with state law that allows for parents to um come in and take a look at our curriculum and our materials that were used for instruction and to give them notice about that. They have, always have had the right to review and they have, um, some have taken advantage of that, which is terrific. And also be given opportunities to know about all of the opt-in and opt-out provisions that we provide currently, which we do um for our family life education programming specifically. The next policy is Programs for Students with Disabilities, IGBA. This policy allows for the school board to um have two options. Either follow the model policy from the Ohio Operating Standards or create your own model special education policy. We have until the end of May to have this completed. But at the end of my policies, I have one resolution for your consideration that will make this come to life. This policy just says, you're allowed to do it. You're allowed to either adopt the model policy from the state or create your own. That's what this policy does. The next two policies are in regards to College Credit Plus. They are Identical Policies, IGCH dash R and LEC dash R. Rather, they're regulations, not poli, policies. So both of these policies um just have a key point of a new deadline. That's really all these policies do. They change the provision to allow an additional credit college, college credit plus deadline for families. The next policy is about our guidance program. This is in direct reflection to House Bill Eight for part of that parental involvement. So this asks for any time a student has a substantial change in their services and whether those services be counseling, mon- monitoring of any mental, emotional, physical health or well-being. If there's a substantial change in the student services, that parents um will, will be given a prompt notification as part of that. That's part of that House Bill Eight parental involvement. The next policy is Inter-District Open Enrollment, Adjacent District, which is our current policy, JECBB. There's a slight change in Senate Bill Two-oh-eight, which simply allows military families to enroll as part of the open enrollment policy. It's not really a change to our policy, it's an addition. Um, our policy is a little different than what OSB recommend, recommends because we had a few things in order um about our open enrollment policy. So that military families are allowed to open enroll is just an addition to our current policy.
I thought that was already in our current policy.
It's just, um, this is probably perhaps more explicit. Um, so OSB is recommending, we never excluded and it was just worded differently. So OSBA is trying to, because of House Bill Two-eight, draw more attention to it. But it's never been denied, you're right about that. Um, it has been a part of our work, but it's just drawing more attention to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, um, for asking that. The next policy is Student Health Services and Requirements, JHC. This is a house, in reflection to House Bill Eight as well. The most substantial change in this policy is the parental notification of any healthcare services before a healthcare service would um be set in place for a student, including physical, mental, and behavioral. It doesn't apply to any emergency situations. That would be the same as normal where all students are taken care of. But this would mean if there um was a need for any change, notification would be given to, to our families. The next policy, Physical Examination of Students, is JHCA. This is again from House Bill Eight, um, a parental involvement provision. This is um, each year on an annual basis, we've always notified families of additional health and physical screenings. They took out the word additional because they want everyone to know that all physical or health screenings, parents would be notified. It wouldn't be just additional um to perhaps an eye exam that we always do for incoming kindergartners, that we'd always notify families. The next policy is Student Safety and that is JHF. This students' policy, student safety policy is revised or reflect House Bill Parental Involvement Permissions. It has the exact same language from other policies deleted in this policy, bless you. Um, the next policy is Reporting Child Abuse and Mandatory Training Policy, JHG. This is from Senate Bill Two-oh-eight. There's been a line in the policy that all child sexual abuse training is to be provided by law enforcement or prosecutors. But now it's stated as may be provided by law enforcement off, officers or prosecutors. So it allows a little flexibility in that. The next policy, Parents' Right to Know, is KBA. This is um a public records request policy that allows for a complainant to follow a certain procedure so that school districts are, are very much aware of what the complainant is asking and that they're dissatisfied with how the public records request may be going. So it allows more clarification to that process. The next policy and then set of policies don't have, don't have a substantive change. It will start with First Aid, EBBA. This policy is simply a cross-reference to IGBLA policy and a legal reference. The next policy, Health Education, IGAE, has no substantive changes. It also just simply has a new legal reference. And um the next one, Parent and Family Involvement in Education, IGBL, also has a legal cross-reference that is a part of this. No substantive changes in that policy as well. So those last three didn't have any substantive changes. So, those last three didn't have any substantive changes, but are, historically, we've always brought that to the board for approval as just part of our, our work. Which brings me to the resolutions, the culminating activity of our policies. And in this resolution, this is required from ODU to either adopt their model policies and procedures as it relates to special education. You can adopt it outright or you can create your own. And so, in working with OSBA, as a part of their review, they found that some of the, the things that they were asking for us, for the board to make a resolution about, were unnecessary and not a part of the law. So, they kind of went through this with a fine-tuned comb and on our, on the board's behalf and on our behalf as a district, went through and said what we would agree to and what our exceptions would be. It doesn't change the intent of the ODU model policy procedures, but it is perhaps more in line with the actual requirements. The requirements are moving forward for the board. The ask is for the board to adopt this board resolution and to notify ODU by May 30th of the board's approval and then to verify that the board approved it each year annually. And in November is when that approval would be a part of. The OSBA didn't decide this on their own. They worked with the Ohio Council of School Board Attorneys and the Special Education Consultants that were a part of this. So, they feel strongly that this would more accurately reflect the needs of the districts that they serve as well. So, that's a resolution that they're asking us by, by May 30th to have approved by the board and uploaded into the system for documentation. And that concludes my policies for this evening. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Chesim.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
We all anxiously await next week and the following committee.
I have a couple of questions on this.
All right.
So much. I feel like a resolution like this is putting us at high risk, given the things that are coming down from federal statutes that will potentially impact our funding, that cover I E P, I A E D A, and all of the other acronyms that cover our Students with Disability Services. So, wording it to put it on us, that we will provide all of that, makes it sound like they're setting us up to be financially responsible for things that we have been dependent on from the, from the actual federal funding side of things. I do not feel comfortable agreeing to that yet without knowing what's coming for our, our funding for our kids with disabilities. This is setting us up.
It's one of those.
I'm just picturing Admiral Ackbar here. It's a trap.
Talking about the resolution.
Yeah.
So, we can always talk to our attorneys about.
Oh, your mic's off, sorry. Yeah. It's been off the whole time. I didn't hear you at all when I was driving in.
We can always talk to our attorneys about putting something in here that says as long as we're mandated to provide special ed services, that we will pay for special ed services.
I mean, I'm totally fine with supporting all of our kiddos that need every service. I am a service that is provided to kids as an interpreter. I understand that. I just don't want this to come back and bite us because they're threatening federal cuts that will directly impact that portion of our budget.
You're right.
And that's.
You're exactly right, because if they cut funding, they'll probably change some of the mandates too.
Exactly. Like, oh, hey, just sign this, it says you'll cover, right? You, you got, it's like one of those insurance bills. Oh, if they say no, you just sign it, like, no. I, mm-mm.
You're exactly right. We, we will make a note to talk to the attorneys about that. That's a good point.
And so, maybe by next Thursday, we can bring you any of their additional recommendations for that particular resolution that might feel more comfortable.
That would definitely make me feel better on that one. The other one that I had concerns with were under the Student Health and Well-Being portion. Trying to figure out which one that is. I G B L A. The parent reporting issues. I totally agree that, you know, parents are a part of that process, especially when kiddos need extra supports at school. What I am concerned with is that sometimes the things that these kids are coming to us with are related to their parents, are related to home environments, risks. What kind of position does that put our teachers in as mandated reporters if that threat that they are coming to us for counseling or, you know, maybe mental health counseling or some, some service? What if it directly relates to perceived experiences in their home life? What kind of position is that putting our teachers in if they then have to go and tell the parent or guardian or whoever that this situation is causing this student issues? Will that make it worse, so to speak? I really don't like putting our teachers into a required position. I feel that they are trained to, to report when they need to report and to respect that student when they need to respect that student. And to say, you have to tell them if they go and ask for a counselor's appointment or, you know, if they're having these questions or if they're having concerns with home life, that risk is great for me.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. The reporting would occur if there was a change in the counseling. So, if there was an urgent need of some sort and a student went to a counselor because of a concern that happened with the person that the counselor would need to report that to, they wouldn't have to report that. That wasn't a change of service. That's an awareness being brought to the counselor that they could, as a mandatory reporter, work with the proper agencies to make that true. They wouldn't have to report that to the parent because that wasn't a change in programming. I think these policies hint at, and the stack is a little too, too big for me to flip properly.
Sorry.
So, I wanted to pull it out where it talks about that because it is about a change in programming and not an urgent or emergency need.
Okay.
That what, is what you'd be talking about. We still.
But if we have to report it and let's say it's, it's normal for them to say, I've got problems at home, but maybe those things escalated and maybe they are now requesting some type of service. Like, then suddenly we have to report it because there was a change made, but the change could still be relevantly impacted by that child's home life.
If we report a concern to an agency about a situation in the home life, the agency will, within a certain time period, share that concern with the home. It's part of their work and they would put in the proper safeguards for that child because of it. So, I still don't think that this policy, I don't think it's a change in placement or programming, but it would just be.
I'm just thinking, some of this would be impacted if maybe the kid comes, comes out of the closet and they want to talk to a counselor. That puts that kid at risk. If the kid is not in an abusive situation, but maybe they're having trouble at home in other ways, maybe they're depressed and they suddenly seek counseling, that may not be something that goes through a third-party agency or would get reported as abuse, but maybe the kid is experiencing depression, which teens definitely do. It's just one of those things where, to me, what does a change in status mean if a kid is suddenly depressed and wants to talk to a counselor that now, does that warrant talking to a parent or does that mean, give the counselor the freedom to say, we need to involve the parents, or maybe this is about home issues, that they're not feeling heard at home? And telling the parent may not help with that. I don't know. I can't give exact examples, but I'm just saying it, it reads as if it's a, an ask of a teacher or a counselor to suddenly say that you don't know when you should be reaching out to parents. Our parents are already there. When there's something that's serious, they, they get them involved. I just feel like this is another piece of paper that just says, we don't trust the trained staff to do the right thing by our parents.
So, the policy, the Student Health Services and Requirement Policy says, obtains parental authorization before providing any type of healthcare services to students, including physical, mental, behavioral healthcare services, and parents can choose whether they authorize the district to provide healthcare services. I don't think what you're describing is a healthcare service, but let's look at guidance.
It said counseling and, and providing mental health support. So, if a student suddenly comes up with a need to talk to a counselor and their parents sign them out of being able to have those services.
You mean opt-out completely.
Yeah. If they say, I'm opting my kid out, I don't want you to treat them, but then that kid comes forward later with an issue that needs a counselor. Sorry, buddy, your kid, your parent didn't approve that, we can't help you. I'm just concerned with those types of.
I understand your concern.
Things, you know, I want these kids to be able to receive help from the people that we keep telling them are the people who are there to help them. And I understand that a parent can say, hey, I don't want my kid to go to your clinic, we have our own doctor at home. Okay, cool, great, we, we won't utilize the CarePoint clinic or whatever, cool. But if you're, if it says mental health services and counseling services or support services, if that kid suddenly comes up and says, I need to sit down and talk to somebody, I don't want our teachers to be stuck saying no to them because of a piece of paper that their parent said, well, my kid doesn't need counseling, I'm just gonna not do that. I don't like it.
I understand. I, I think we might, we might be okay because the line in the guidance department, which is really what you're talking about, the district promptly notifies a student's parent of any substantial change in the student's services, including counseling services or monitoring related to their mental, emotional, or physical health or well-being or the school's ability to provide them a safe and supportive learning environment. So, I guess I don't think when a student goes, so this is my interpretation, when a student goes to the counselor, I don't see that as a substantial change, having the conversation. I think a substantial change would be if that required a mental health therapist, then we, we've been the parents. I don't think talking to the counselor because of a need is a substantial change in, in the, the student's service, but that's my interpretation because.
Right. Would a parent argue though? Well, my kid didn't need, need a counselor before, so to me, it's substantial as a parent, like.
I see. Yeah, substantial is the word that, that we're both of us are looking at.
It's the language.
We again can look at legal counsel to see if there's a way out, but I will say, House Bill 8 is pretty intent on their provision to allow parents a high level of involvement with good intentions. You're talking about when something goes poorly.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand that worry.
That's when it bites us. It's not that I don't want parents involved in that process. It's, it's when there's a situation, which unfortunately comes up from time to time, where a student needs us to not have to worry about the legal side of, of this wording as to whether or not we can help them.
We can, we can.
I don't want it to bite us.
Legal counsel about it. In my view though, I, I would read this as, it's, if I'm a counselor and someone comes to talk to me about their, a challenge, it's not a substantial change in their day, they're still part of the school, they're not in a program, quote-unquote, but I, I can appreciate your concern and we can talk to legal counsel about that as well.
Okay.
I wonder if it's kind of like internal versus external, you know, like those counselors are, are employees and that's their job to kind of like counsel the kid as opposed to going downstairs to center health or whatever.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, like maybe that's what it is, like, you know, you're opting out because like you said, we already have a doctor, we already have a whatever.
Right.
I don't want my child to do that, but I, maybe, like I said, maybe what would clarify would be like internal versus external.
I'm also thinking if it's an ongoing therapy issue that the kids aren't comfortable talking to their parents about, and maybe it does need long-term therapy involvement. Maybe they are still grieving the loss of someone and it might not be someone that their parents can really help them with, or maybe they feel like their parents aren't helping them at all and they say, I need this. Or, like I said, if a kid's struggling with their own identity and they're like, I'm not comfortable talking to my parents about this, and then we go and call them because suddenly they need ongoing mental health supports as they're directing this or as they're saying, hey, we need to figure out a way for you to feel safe at home to do this in a way that you can be supported. I feel like it puts us in a position where we're saying, we can't make that determination with a student if they're opting out of everything.
Right.
That's just my concern. There are instances where a kid might need us to be there and be the support system they don't have. And there are also kids who may not have that at home.
Sure.
So.
We can get further clarification on it, but as Christina said, and there's so much of this is, is driven by rules and laws that we have.
And I wasn't happy with House Bill 8, so.
Yeah.
Because it took, to me, it took away a lot more than it gave.
Yeah.
I understand.
You know, because we, we do our best to involve our parents, especially if it's something where they, they need us to be there, that we are eyes and ears. We see their kid, you know, over half the day. We have to be able to talk to them openly. I, I'm just not comfortable with this document.
Okay. All right, we'll do some more work about it. Thank you for being back, I appreciate it. Hi. Was that all?
Those were the two main ones.
Okay.
There's a lot, I have to read more, but.
Okay. Item eight on the agenda, this is Building and Grounds. So, Ms. Ballard, I will turn it over to you.
I do not.
There's not anything there.
I was gonna say, I don't have any usage requests for today and we'll get our facilities updates in the special board meeting.
All right. Item nine, this is our Finance Committee, so I will turn it over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Campas.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have some good news. So, Norwood City Schools has been awarded again, the award presented for excellence in financial reporting, so.
You did so good.
So, what you should say is you've been recognized. Me and my staff have been recognized.
Does that mean every penny accounted for?
What is it mean? That means that when they did our, our financial audit, that they didn't find anything that, that they questioned or anything that needed to be explained. There was no management letter. That means it was pretty much a perfect audit, so only about 13% of public entities in the state of Ohio get it every year and.
How many?
We were one of them.
13%?
Yeah.
Wow.
And that's all entities, not just school districts. School districts are a notch above, so school districts get this award a lot more than, you know.
Who else? What other kind of entities?
Cities, towns.
Oh.
Cemeteries, all those, any kind of public entity. Any kind of public entity, so, yeah, I was really, really proud to get it. I really want to thank my fantastic staff for their hard work and their commitment to excellence too. They really, they really do a great job. As we watch the state work through the biennial budget, it seems like our state revenues will be more uncertain than ever. In the governor's version of the biennial budget, we were to lose about $1 million over the two-year budget period. In the House version, while the cuts were restored, they put limits on our cash reserves of 25% of the prior year expenditures. They would then limit or stop our local tax revenues until we meet their requirements.
Well, you know, they have a stadium to pay for in Cleveland.
So, they would, they would not allow us to take any of our tax revenues, to get any of our tax revenues that our taxpayers voted on to give to us. They are taking those away from us until we, until we meet their requirements. We're only allowed to have a 20, we're only allowed to have a 25% of prior year expenditures cash, cash balance. Right now, we have about 48, which is not excessive at all because what I like to say in, when everybody leaves in May but the Superintendent's Office and the Treasurer's Office and the Custodial Office or the Maintenance Office, when everybody leaves, I owe three months of salaries and benefits to our staff and that's about 85, 80% of our budget. So, right there, there's three months right there that I owe. That money is appropriated and, and spoken for. So, I have to have a little bit more than that or I, you know, we're just destitute. So, really and truthfully, you know, 50% is much, is, is much better than 25%. So, we're working through that. We're trying to get our voices heard through ASBO and OSBA, so we're hoping that they will listen to reason on that. Now, there are some school districts that do have, you know, extreme cash balances and we're not one of them, so we'll see what they say.
Are they planning to do like a stock market fold on that? So, they'll say, we'll hold this money for you and start secret investment-type deals and then give it to us later out of profits?
I really don't know how they're gonna do it. I was reading some of the treasurer comments on it and it just kept getting wilder and wilder, you know, because like, like what I said is, well, how do we start it back up again when we need it? Do we have to go pass another levy? I mean, how do you, it's just, you know, some of the stuff they come up with and I, I just.
Why seems.
They've never been on our shoes, obviously.
Are there other things we have to do before they withhold our taxes?
I don't know. They just, they just put this couple of lines in there.
The 25%.
Yeah, they just put a couple of lines in there and then, you know, they tell you how they do it after it passes, so.
Well, what are we supposed to do with the money that we already have?
That we, we get no revenues until we spend it down.
Holy cow.
Yeah. So, in addition, in the House version, they're not phasing in the Fair School Funding Act nor are they updating base costs, which are two things that are very important to the Fair School Funding Act. We will see what the Senate version looks like, but neither of the House or the governor's plans looked very good to me. On the agenda, 9.01, the CFO report, monthly financial. On the agenda, 9.01, the CFO report, monthly financials and change order listing is attached for your review. You will notice that we only had one change order listing and that is the file for high school phase two. This is the first time in seven years that I have not have an active construction change order paper on the agenda for you. Of course, tonight in our special meeting, we're approving the notice to proceed for Williams Beautification Project next week, so we'll be starting up another project, but it's just a small one. So yeah, it's been a long road, seven years of construction projects. 9.02, our appropriation resolution, our current budget. 9.03, resolution accepting amounts and rates. So this is an important little document from the Hamilton County Auditor. They've reviewed our cash balances and proposed new millage rates for the 25, 26 school year. This is, this is typical, they do this every year. Our bond levy has been set at two mils, which is down from the voted 4.64 mils. Our substitute levies in total are at 13.46 mils, down from the 19.2 voted mils. Both of these are prime examples of how House Bill 920 restricts inflationary growth and tax, and tax values. So as the value of Norwood properties grow, our bond and substitute millage rates drop per House Bill 920 in order to stop that inflationary growth of real estate taxes. We have the same kind of thing that happens in our, on our general fund also, our taxes there. 9.04, planetarium lease. We are considering a renewal lease with the planetarium. You heard a little bit about their services today. 9.05, a lease termination with CenterPoint Health Center. Due to lack of availability, the CenterPoint lease has been terminated as of June 13th. We are working to contract with another provider that would be dedicated to our parents and students and more easily accessible. Finally, the last thing is 9.06, a natural gas supplier. Our current natural gas contract expires in December of '25. As the spring is typically lower prices for gas, now is a good time to shop. This is a two-year contract with lower terms than the prior contract and a, a lower terms than the current due pricing. So this will save us a little bit of money on our natural gas spend.
Okay, I was thinking it would be good to repeat the 9.03 about bond levies and the mils because I know it is a common misconception which we have heard from some prominent members of our neighborhood. That when property prices go up, that we get so much more money at school. And this is not true. And Julie can tell you all about it.
Yep, that's why, you know, this is, this comes up every year and every year I say a little bit about it. This time I said a little bit more. Exactly.
It bears repeating.
Yes. Now, I, I will say that we do get inflationary growth when we're on the floor. So our general fund money when we're on the floor, those 20 mils, 20 mils.
What does that mean on the floor?
20 mils, that's when you're on the floor is when you're at 20 mils. So the state of Ohio, the law says every district will pay 20 mils on their property valuation to support public education. And so when we drop to the floor, then we get some inflationary growth. So we do get some inflationary to growth, but we don't get what everybody thinks we get. I think our attorney said it very well. Brenda Weimer, when we were in council's presence and we were talking about increases and she said, our last valuation increase went up 30% and we only saw a 6% increase in our revenues. So you'll see the discrepancy there. Valuations up 30, revenue only up 6. Now, 6 is a nice increase. I'm not saying that's not enough. I'm just trying to prove that, you know, we don't see equal whatever the valuation is in, in revenues, so. It's complicated little formula, but yes, right now, we all need to be talking about it and learning a little bit more about it for many reasons.
It's quite an education.
It's fun. I know, it's real exciting stuff.
It kind of is. I think it is.
Anything else for our treasurer?
All right, I have one question. I'm, I'm reading through this. I know we were updating some items on the contract for the planetarium. Are we happy with this language and changes?
That very much is just a draft. We are still working on that.
We're still working on it, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
We wanted to get something out there just so you could see what we're thinking, but we, we, we need to still have a legal look at it a little bit more and.
I had a couple of points on here that I was talking to on the meeting.
Yes, I think we took out, I think, believe that you'll have a voting member on their board instead of an ex officia one. I know that was one of the things you were interested in.
Don't have to be a, a voting member, but it said it excludes from all discussions. And it's like, well, that's kind of the point.
Yeah.
So. But if, if it wants to be a voting member, sure. If not, I'm okay with that, but I don't want to be excluded from those discussions because of that reason, so.
I did say it was when it applied, because what was it?
If it applies with direct conflict, I'm totally fine to, to.
I think that's what they were getting at.
But if it, if it's just a matter of personnel discussion, like bringing in the students or doing something like, like to me, that's personnel discussion. So if you're telling me I can't even be involved in that, it's like, well, okay. Kind of weird. So I just thought the weird, the wording in that one was, was odd and I know we were worried about the room usage.
I did delete on the first page, yes.
Okay, yeah, I was looking for it, so okay.
I did remove that. She's cer, Pam is certainly welcome to use it, but I didn't want to tie it up for three years. It's a space the project grant had used that then Pam moved into. And we might need that again for educational purposes, so I didn't want to tie it up. But she's certainly welcome to use it when she needs it.
Okay.
But if there's anything else, would you let me know before we finish it? Because it is very much a draft.
I mean, if you want to have, have legal look at it and then send me a copy of whatever they, with, with those concerns that we had already mentioned on the call, that would be fantastic. We were able to meet with, the gentleman that was over here was one of their legal counsel from KML and we were able to, or KPL, and we were able to work through some of the language during that call. So that's why I didn't know if this was the edited version or not, so.
We also pointed out there's a, a discrepancy in the, the dates. It says 60 months, but it outlines three years.
That's what I was.
So we're gonna change that, yeah.
I noticed that, I was like, wait, wait, where is it? And I just found it, yeah, 60 months. I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wait, that math ain't mathin', so, okay. So we wanted, we want to do the three year, is that what we're?
It's, it's.
Looking at.
Yes, they asked for five.
I didn't know if you wanted the 60 or the.
They had been three years in the past. It was only this one time that they ever get a five year. So three years probably more practical if you're in agreement.
My, my thought on this whole thing, I know they wanted five years. Since we were making so many impactful changes to the contract, I was even gonna suggest that we do a two-year to start with a five-year pending. If this is great and it doesn't need changes and tweaks, I don't have a problem with approving a five-year because that means it's just less things on our plate.
It's true.
But the two-year, one year isn't enough to do anything. You don't learn anything, you don't see anything. So I was like, two years at minimum to give us a test period to say, is this functional for our needs, their needs? Are we seeing marked growth and improvements for the areas we are requesting? And then going forward, we could address a five-year plan with those tweaks. If we want to do just a flat three and do it at three, I'm okay with that too.
Yeah.
But that was my compromise with their legal team was if you're asking for five, I think we need to step back from that and give it a preliminary run first before we approve five.
Yeah, I think the five seems extensive. I mean, I don't, I don't even think administration has five-year contracts, right? Like that's a, that's a big commitment, so.
But certain things in here, like use of the planetarium, isn't gonna change. It's kind of like how we have some board policies that just don't get updated because you don't really have to change if it's not broke, so to speak, but.
But we want the flexibility.
But yeah, exactly. So that's why I'm like, I'm happy in the middle. That makes the most sense to me.
I think so too.
And contract terms are a great time to get changes in, so too, that's another reason to keep it a two or three-year.
Yeah.
So like you said, if we have growing pains that we need to change, we have an opportunity to do it in two or three years.
I'm perfectly fine with that, so we just change the month and year to match.
Yes, we'll do that, that's on our list.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, item 10, do I have a motion to adjourn?
All motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll second. My, my mic wasn't on before.
I, I do have a thing because it might be able to be added for next week and I'm not sure if it is or not, but would it be possible to add on the calendar for summer at this month's meeting? Because I'm being asked by family for planning for vacation schedules. And I don't know when we're gonna, because we would talk about potentially changing our summer schedule to have two-in-one meetings potentially. So I wanted to see if we could have that discussion next week about our schedule so that we can plan for summer vacations.
We can talk about it, but we said that, we said that at the organization.
Yeah, we said that at the organization. It was like, I think we did that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't remember because I know we sometimes will approve future meetings. I just want to double check those dates like we do and typically just go ahead and approve flat out. Because I think we kind of adjusted them, but we knew we might need to move dates based on travel, so.
Yeah.
If possible.
Let's do that.
Cool. Thank you, that's all I need.
I just want to remind everybody too, please do not jump up and leave. We have a special meeting immediately following, following. Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The time is 7:21 and our committee meeting is adjourned. So also at 7:21, I will call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education's special meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 8th. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ballard?
Present.
Mrs. Rarica?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Mr. Attwood is absent. And Mrs. Cole?
Present. Item 1.03, this is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, with that agenda approved, we can move on.[1660.78]